Good evening. Good evening. Welcome to this meeting of the Merrimack School Board this Monday evening, June 15th, 2015. Would you all rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That takes us to item number two on tonight's agenda, focus on James Mastrocola Upper Elementary School. I'd invite to the table Principal Marcia McGill and Assistant Principal Bill Morris to invite the large contingent of educators and students here to present tonight. Thank you for coming. We're very happy to have you.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for inviting us to share some highlights from this past school year. First, I'd like to start by introducing the guests from our school that I have. With me, the JMU staff members are William Morris, our Assistant Principal, Helen Fitzgerald, Laura Livy, Kathy Goodman, Lisa La Bresch, Courtney McDonald, and Colleen Rush. The JMU students that are here with us this evening are Daisy Robinson, Shannon Ayers, we have Calvin Johnson, go ahead and wave so they know which one you are, Anthony Monti, we have Kaylee Cosco, Julia Livy, Justin Favreau, and Trevor Tureen. Tonight, we would like to highlight the JMU's Response to Instruction, or RTI Initiative, implemented this year. At JMU's, response to instruction is a proactive and systematic integration of school resources to promote achievement for each learner. We are committed to ensuring that all students achieve their potential through high-quality, multi-tiered, and research-based instruction delivered with fidelity. Our common goal is to promote the growth of each child on their trajectory aligned with rigorous educational standards. The decisions we make regarding students' academic, social, emotional, and behavioral needs are based on multiple data points in context over time. For the past two years, a team of eight JMU staff members have been working collaboratively with teams from each building in the district, as well as consultants from the New Hampshire Department of Education to refine the response to instruction model in Merrimack. Through this work, the JMU's RTI team closely examined our practices and decided to restructure the way we provide tiered instruction to students. We began adding a tiered instruction activity block in our schedule. The block runs from 8:40 to 9:10 a.m. on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday mornings. Monday and Friday mornings are reserved for curriculum-integrated activities. Mr. Morris will show more about this a little bit later in our presentation, but you'll see there on that Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, it says Tier 2, 3, and extensions. Next, we refined our RTI process by developing a tiered instructum protocol, more known as TIPS, for Tier 1, 2, and 3 identification and instruction. We identified benchmark assessments and the cutoff scores for each grade level. For students who do not meet benchmark scores, we identified a screening team, a screening tool, and a variety of intervention strategies to do, to use during small group instruction. Now, Mrs. Fitzgerald will share a little more about the assessment process.
All students have a benchmark assessment three times a year during the fall, winter, and spring. From these assessments, we have data talks, and all teachers discuss all students three times a year during fall, winter, and spring. From the results of the benchmarks, if students did not meet their benchmark, then we have a whole-to-part assessment. And this encompasses, sort of like a speed dating, we call it, where students that do not meet the benchmark, we're looking to find out where specific can we help them the most. And so, we have stations around print processing, listening comprehension, and word identification. I've had the pleasure of introducing three teachers who completed their masters in this category from Southern New Hampshire University, and they are Colleen Rush, Kathy Goodman, and Lisa La Bresch. For their capstone project, they created the lessons that go with our RTI program. And at this time, I'd like to introduce to you Mrs. Rush.
Good evening. My name is Colleen Rush, and I'm a 5th grade special educator at JMU's, and I also serve on the RTI team. My focus for TIA was print processing and oral reading fluency. Print processing is the ability to efficiently and effectively silently read text. However, since we cannot monitor silent reading, we know that by addressing, strengthening, and monitoring oral reading fluency, we will therefore impact print processing. The fluency unit I created included an instructional calendar with materials and a daily progress monitoring opportunity. Tonight, I have two members of my fluency group here to discuss their experiences and also give you a recap of the definition of fluency. Please welcome tonight 5th graders Shannon Ayers and Daisy Robinson.
My name is Shannon Ayers. I'm a 5th grader at JMU's. During TIA, I was a member of the fluency group. In this group, we learned all about fluency and becoming a more fluent reader. We made folders to keep all of our information. We used Fluency Frank, a squishy toy. Only the person who had Frank could talk. Frank listened to us read. At the end of our session, we performed a play, the Singing of the SS Homophone, using all of the information we learned for another fluency group.
I am Daisy Robinson, and I am a 5th grader at JMU's. During TIA, I was a member of the fluency group. In this group, we learned rap, and I will tell you what fluency rap is. The R stands for rate. Rate is the speed you read at. A is for accuracy, which is reading words exactly like the author wrote them. P is for prosody, which is expression and paying attention to punctuation to give your reading meaning. In group, we used fluency phrases to chunk our reading in three to four-word phrases. We are now working on a JMU celebrity reading of the Declaration of Independence, using all of the things we learned in fluency group, but also what we learned in social studies.
And now, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Goodman.
So, Mrs. Goodman, and I also teach 5th grade at the Upper Elementary School. I also currently serve on the RTI team, both school-wide and district-wide. I created the instructional calendar that included 24 lessons, along with bi-weekly progress monitoring for the unit on listening comprehension, which does relate to language comprehension. Listening comprehension refers to the understanding of the implications of explicit meanings of words and sentences of spoken language. The lessons that I designed were used to support language comprehension. Language comprehension is the ability to understand the language associated with the things he or she reads or hears. Today, I have with me a student from my group, Calvin. He always put forth his best effort during our TIA time, so here's Calvin.
I'm Calvin Johnson from Mrs. Landry's class. My TIA group was listening comprehension. In my group, we read stories, then answered questions, and then talked about the main idea. One of the things I learned was to write a response with full sentences using evidence from the text. It also helped me to get even better at reading.
Next, I'm going to introduce the lovely Mrs. La Bresch.
Thanks, I like that. I'm Lisa La Bresch, a 6th grade teacher at JMU's, and I created a module through Maya Capstone, which consisted of an instructional calendar and 24 lessons within the topic of word identification. Word identification is the process of determining the pronunciation and some degree of meaning of an unknown word. Tonight, I have a student with me, Anthony Monti, who participated in the instruction of the lessons that I created. Anthony will speak of his experience from a student perspective.
Hi, my name is Anthony Monti, and I'm currently a 6th grade at JMU's. For TIA this year, I participated in a group for word identification, excuse me. During this time, we completed fun and engaging activities with prefixes, suffixes, and root words. After the eight-week session, I feel these lessons helped me to better understand how to break words apart and fix the meaning of an unknown word based upon its prefix or suffix. Because of my work in TIA, I feel like I am more comfortable and independent when it comes to working with words and vocabulary.
And now, I'm going to introduce you to another fabulous 6th grade teacher, Mrs. McDonald.
Hi, I'm Courtney McDonald. I teach 6th grade at JMU's. I'm going to talk about readers theater. Readers theater is a collaborative process of writing scripts in small groups, rehearsing and acting out their original skits in front of the class. Teachers introduced readers theater to students, watched a video on it, and then read a story aloud as a class. Kids discussed the group expectations and assigned roles in their groups. They initially filled in a graphic organizer to help plan their ideas before the script writing began. Kaylee Cosco will explain her experience.
My name is Kaylee Cosco, and I'm a 5th grader. I'm here to share with you about the activity I participated in for TIA, which was also PBIS-based readers theater script writing. My group wrote a play about being polite in public. We had to write the scripts all by ourselves, but first, we read a story about it, and we learned dialogue tips to help us with our scripts. Something I really enjoyed was performing in front of everybody and creating the scripts.
Laura Livy will continue.
And I'm Laura Livy, the behavior specialist at the Upper Elementary School. The kids collaboratively wrote their skits, and this was a, this was a difficult process because they had to take all their ideas and sort of figure it out, who's going to say what and what the parts are. They used the PBIS themes of respect, responsibility, and safety. It took several lessons for them to get the skit, the script down correctly, and then they brainstormed props and backgrounds, and then they had to rehearse and act out their skit, and then they, they did it in front of the whole class. So, it was, it was a, a good process. And to give her experience, my daughter Julia Livy.
Hi, my name is, hi, my name is Julia Livy. I'm in 5th grade in Mrs. Goodman's class. I'm going to share with you about TIA group, which was about PBIS-based readers theater script writing. My group and I wrote a play about how to overcome your fears and worries. I enjoyed making props and actually learning how to overcome your fears and worries. In my group, I learned how to write a script. When you write a, when you write a script, you need dialogue. Also, you need to have a good pace when you read your script, so we worked on fluency, too.
Very good. And Mr. Morris is now going to be talking about CIA.
So, on Mondays and Fridays at James Mastrocola Upper Elementary School, students had the opportunity to participate in CIA. It sounds very secretive, but really, really, what it is, is CIA stands for Curriculum-Integrated Activity. And on these days, between 8:40 and 9:10, students had the opportunity to choose an activity that was of interest to them, and the activity they chose ran during the duration of a quarter. The activities are professional learning team-based and are offered by staff in the area of each child's classroom. Some of the activities that have been made, that were made available to students included chess, sign language, and coding. Students have shared that they enjoyed having choices and participating in the activities, and that they may not have been able to do otherwise, you know, given the variety of, of things that were offered. Band and chorus meet during this time as well. Students have the opportunity to participate in either or both, as band meets one morning and chorus the other. And what we really liked about the schedule that, that was created was that having band and chorus meet during this time provided all students with an opportunity to participate in the JMU's music program. Two of our students tonight are with us to talk about their experiences participating in CIA. The first is Justin Favreau, and the second is Trevor Tureen. And so, at this time, Justin will, will begin.
I'm Justin Favreau, and I'm in 5th grade. I'm here to talk to you about the CIA's I participated in this year. My first CIA, CIA group was coding with Mr. Goodman. I enjoyed exploring Scratch, which is a coding website where you can make a cat do things using coding. I also enjoy discovering how to code. I did coding for two quarters of the school year. I just finished tapestry weaving with Mrs. Gruber. In weaving, we drew a picture, create a loom, and then wool are drying using yarn, ribbons, and other materials to create our tapestry weaving.
Do you have some samples?
Oh, this is Kaylee Cosco's weaving. It is in pro, it is work in progress. And this is mine.
Hi, my name is Trevor Tureen. I'm in Mrs. Robinson's 5th grade class. I've heard. I participated in two different CIA activities this year. I learned sign language with Mrs. Robinson. For example, if I need a book, I can sign book. With Mr. Ed Scorn, I learned about the seven habits of highly effective people. In this activity, I learned about win-win situations, which teaches you how to figure out a solution that makes everyone win. For example, if I was going to share pizza with someone who wanted different toppings, we would decide to have our favorite toppings just put on half the pizza, so we both would get what we want. These sessions, no, these sessions taught me a lot of things, and it was really fun to be able to choose what I wanted to do. Also, I went to band on Monday, which I totally love, so I got to do that, and then go to CIA on Friday.
Thank you, Justin and Trevor. And now, Mrs. McGill will have a few closing words.
Well, as you can see, we've been pretty busy this year, you know, with that change of the schedule and being able to offer students a wide variety of different activities, from activities on Mondays and Fridays to, you know, very purposeful instruction to what a child needs on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. So, I wanted to finish by talking about the successes, especially our RTI successes. We developed that defined tiered instruction block for literacy, and we're very excited because we have a pretty tight day, so to be able to find 30 minutes to devote to that. But we were committed to it and worked with that schedule and really kind of threw everything out and put it back together to be able to find that while maintaining all of our academic subjects, as well as our I and E block, our intervention and extension block, at the end of each day. Also, we continue to analyze assessment data to determine if a student needs interventions or extension activities. We do that as PLTs. We also do that as an entire building, looking at all of our students and our assessment data. Also, we really refined our process of small group instruction to meet individual students' needs. You know, with that work that we did with the whole-to-part, to be able to really identify what is that main area of need in the area of reading, we were able to really define those groups. We had groups all over the building because it really is an all-hands-on-deck process. So, we had everyone in the building working with students in groups. Some groups are a little bit larger if they were our, you know, PBIS script writing, or smaller if they were maybe print processing or language comp. And we're talking about groups of five or six students, or a little bit larger if they're the, the large script-writing groups. Also, we had regularly scheduled progress monitoring so we could see what children were really accomplishing through the work that we're doing. We're very excited about the work that we've done. We're excited to continue it through to next year and extend it a, a little bit more. It's a very, you know, arduous process to, to go through, to look at all that data, but we're excited to continue because we know we're providing children with what they need to continue to learn and grow. So, at this time, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to entertain them.
Thank you. And before I open it up for questions, I would just like to say to the students in particular, but everyone involved, thank you for wonderful presentations. We held back from giving you a round of applause after each of you finished, but I think you all deserve a round of applause. And with that, I'll open it up for questions. Mr. Snyder.
Yes, thanks. First, to echo what Chairman Ortega said, great work by, by all the, the children that are here. I think it's really good showing your interest in what you were involved in. I have a, sort of a question about the structure of the, that beginning period. The first question is, do all the students in, in the Upper Elementary participate during that first period? And if so, how do you make sure that all of them? Because you talked about a bunch of small groups. I'm sure that makes your, the ratios and the amount of students versus the number of instructors challenging. So, I'm just curious how you structured that for the entire school.
Well, it was, it was a lot of work, but we were able to do it. We had to look at what the groups were and what children needed. We know that when you're a small group work, you don't want more than six children in a small group for it to really be effective, so we really had to pull people from everywhere and utilize them. You know, our professional staff, our paraeducators as well, our professional Unified Arts teachers, everyone worked. We tried to put kids to, or teachers together if they were a little bit larger group, like some of our script-writing groups were a little bit larger, so maybe there were 25 or 30 students, but there'd be two adults. But our small groups, we really stayed true to our not more than six students. It was a real challenge scheduling, but we were able to get it done. We started at 8:40 a.m. That bell rang in the morning, kids would come in, drop their things at the locker, and go exactly to where they needed to, to go.
So, just as a follow-on to that, what did you, what did you learn that you might do differently next year? Because I would imagine when you've got kids potentially spread all over the building and then they've got to come back, you know, did you learn you need more buffer time, or you had enough, or any other learnings? Just out of curiosity.
We found that our children are really pretty good at meeting those timelines, coming in in the morning. We, we made sure that we paid attention to when do we ring that bell in the morning, or when do we bring them in, when do we line them up from recess to get them in on time to do that. We did put some bells in that we've never had before, so we have an 8:40 so that you know when that bell rings, you should be in your group and ready to go. When that bell rings at 9:10, you know, that group is over and you need to get to your homeroom because you have five minutes for, you know, that kind of homeroom before your day starts then in the classroom. It was a little tight. Will we continue to do it in the morning? Will we maybe flip-flop it with our I and E in the afternoon? We haven't made that decision yet, but I, I think what we're just proud of is that it happened. We challenged the staff and the students to go at this new process, and they did a remarkable job. So, just goes to show, when you put that expectation out there, they, they really follow it. And I, I think our students and our staff were excited about the work, and it was very successful.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm glad to see it work because you have this vision of all these kids scattered all over the school, running, running through the, in five minutes, trying to get back to their homerooms where they could be all over the building, so. But the fact that it worked pretty smoothly is, is a testament to the staff, so.
Well, it doesn't mean that we don't have teachers out in the hall. When your group's done, you're standing at the door and you're making sure. But we did have students who maybe if they were in a 5th grade homeroom downstairs, they may have been going up to a 6th grade homeroom for their instruction, so that could happen. But we didn't have students that were lost. I think one day, we looked for a couple students, but we found them. But other than that...
It's just, it's a learning experience for high school because that's exactly what happens when you change classes, so.
Exactly, but our students were very responsible. I was very proud of them.
Great, thanks.
Ms. Qualiumi.
And just to drive a little bit further onto Andy's question, and I mean, I can't imagine the amount of coordination and organization it takes. It's clearly a huge initiative as you maneuver through this, and a change for everyone, too, which is a whole different thing because you've got the change management, particularly for kids maybe that were there before, and teachers, staff, and everyone. But the other question would be, are there other activities you might consider for next year that you didn't? So, aside from, you know, any of the scheduling or the times, you know, as far as, you know, either the process for designating, or selection, or some of the activities that might be considered or not considered anymore.
This being our first year, we did have to put some limitations on it. The Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday doesn't change because that, that's driven by data and, and small groups, and that's instruction in those literacy areas. The Monday and Friday, our initial thought was with CIA, we'll just throw out activities and people will be everywhere, but we quickly said, you know what, we really can't do that. That's a little bit bigger than what we can take on year one. So, let's say, let's have kids stay. If they're not in band and chorus, then they stay within their PLT, and their teachers within their PLT. And you have to know that it's the four classroom teachers, it would be two pairs, a special educator, and then some of our Unified Arts and/or specialists in the building would be assigned to those PLTs. So, what they would then decide among their group is that what could we offer that's a curriculum-integrated activity to our students? And then, within that PLT, so those 100 students that are in that group, and we would've had one group of five, so it would've been 125 students, they would then divide out the kids that aren't in chorus and band, and then make those decisions. In the future, would we like to look to say maybe we could do all across 6th grade and kids change in 5th grade? Yes, but we're not ready for that just yet. Yeah, so, again, we want to continue, get another year of success under our belt, think of some different creative activities, and we let the teachers make the decisions, and they came up with some really creative ideas, as, as you heard from the children. Sign language and chess and coding on the computer, you know, and the seven habits of highly effective people. That's some pretty sophisticated work for 5th and 6th graders to do, so we're really proud of that. So, we'll probably go another year, and I think teachers get ideas from teachers, they'll talk among one another, maybe someone in one PLT saw another PLT doing something, and they'll share ideas and switch it around and get a wide variety of activities again for students.
Mr. Powell.
Thank you. Just a couple comments. I want to first express my appreciation to you for challenging your staff and your students, and then to the staff, and especially the staff that is, that isn't here tonight, how encouraging it is that they stepped up to the plate and, and made this happen. Because that is truly, you know, I'm going to say it the Merrimack way, that, you know, when, when it needs to be done, it's done, and you guys came through with flying colors, so thank you very much. Trevor, I want to say how impressed I am with the seven habits because I work with some adults that could use that information, and the fact that you're getting it now, I think is huge, so thank you for sharing that.
Ms. Barnes.
Well, a couple of things. First, you know, the supply and demand for CIA's. I'm hearing some very specialized things like sign language that you can't really do with 50 kids, 60 kids easily. So, has there been a challenge of supply and demand for CIA's at all? You know, more kids signing up for an interest in the CIA, chess is another one I'm thinking of, with all the pieces that you'd have to supply, but are you having a challenge with distribution of CIA's and kids wanting to, a lot of kids wanting one over another and being able to fit that?
I think you'd always have that, that challenge, but it's a group of 100 students within a professional learning team, and then they probably have about seven adults, maybe eight adults that would be available. And I think some of them, they would choose to, if they had more kids that could sign up than they could handle with a teacher, maybe that teacher would offer it again the next quarter, and it would be a different group of students. Because we have four quarters in the year, they, maybe you have a group of 25 students the first quarter, and then maybe the second quarter, it's a different group of your 25 kids out of your 100. So, we let the PLTs manage that, but I would think that would always be a, a challenge.
Got you. And then, just a piece of advice, I know we're kind of getting used to it, but you've been very good about acronyms, but our kids, being a retiring JMU's parent as of Friday, the acronyms, like I'm home, I feel like sometimes our kids come home and speak a different language because they're on page with you guys, and I'm looking at the mother right now, was like, can you translate what just happened here? Because he's like, well, my PLT has this CIA, and I'm like, what just happened here? What did you do in school? So, maybe a bookmark or something for parents... So maybe a bookmark or something for parents to know what the kids are actually saying to them. Because they are coming up, they're, they're with your lingo. It's great that they are buying in and coming along, but they come home and I'm like, I'm not really sure what you did today.
It's a very good idea. We'll take your advice.
Thanks. So maybe middle school, if you have that too, just send it to me now, so. But, but thank you. I mean, honestly, guys, you guys are doing such great work. I'm seeing a vigor for learning and different ways of learning, and I think that's so important to keep you engaged and excited about all the different opportunities you have. And Bill, I think you were wrong tonight. CIA is sneaky because you're taking activities and integrating curriculum on the down low and they really are getting that curriculum without even knowing it hidden, which is fantastic. So very, 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 very stealthful. Very stealth. So, so great stuff. I really enjoyed your presentation. Thank you very much.
Everybody all set? I also want to thank you for a wonderful presentation. I'm very happy to see that the kids are so engaged with CIA. As someone who works in high technology myself, I'm very excited to hear that you've taken two quarters' worth of coding and found it fun. And the SCIT development is beyond a way of teaching literacy and academics. The teamwork that must be involved in that and the conflict resolution, those are very important skills that we all need to learn and use day in and day out. And so reinforcing those is just fantastic. And it sounds like you did a great job. I wish I had seen the SCIT. And in terms of the response to intervention, I, I want to thank the students for coming to speak about it. We've talked about the topic here at our table quite a bit and we've talked about it in the abstract. We've talked about how the data meetings go and, and how things are assessed in terms of how we're going to take each student, each one up one. But hearing from the students, how that actually manifests itself, I think is hugely important to us. And so I want to thank the four of you for sharing your experiences over here. It was wonderful. You all did a fantastic job. I've, I read somewhere that the fear, the number one fear that people have is public speaking. The number two fear that people have is dying. So think about that. People are more afraid to get up in public and speak than they are of dying, which doesn't really make sense to me. So you guys did something that a lot of people are afraid to do and I'm very proud of you for doing it. So thank you. And I heard you're going out for ice cream after this. Is that true? Thank you very much. And as our guests leave, we'll move to item number three on tonight's agenda. Approval of the June 1st, 2015 minutes. Is there a motion made by Vice Chair Barnes, seconded by Ms. Gualyumi? Any amendments? Vice Chair Barnes.
I have one on page five, line 238. And it's just a clarification. The last sentence says, you know that some Merrimack High School students attend vocational programs in Hudson and Ashwa and question if there is access to their restraint policies and documentation of restraint forms. It was really at that point more about the documentation of their restraint forms so that we could fluidly be able to respond to anything documented in another district. And that's actually the one I had.
Okay. Any others? I had one or two, but not many. Let's see. On page four, line 175, he affirmed that the use of physical restraint seclusion policy was under review, if we could strike the ED. And then on page six of 10, line 278, Director Fabrizio felt option one would be preferred by most parents because most three-year-olds require an afternoon nap. I believe this should be option two because option two was the one that creates a morning classroom. Is that correct? Yeah. So if we could change this to option two, that would be great. And then that may have been it. And then the last one was really just formatting. On page nine of 10, between line 417 and 418, we should just add a line. And that's all that I had. It was a good set of minutes. So with that, we'll put the amended minutes to a vote. All those in favor of accepting the amended minutes of the June 1st, 2015 meeting, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. So the motion carries 401 with Board Member Schneider abstaining. Thank you. And that takes us to item number four, public participation. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board. All we ask is that you come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone looking to address the board under public participation? Seeing none, we'll close public participation and move to item five, acceptance of gifts or grants under $5,000. Business Administrator Chevannell.
Thank you very much and good evening. Tonight we have two gifts. One is from the Health Trust, an amount of $200. The gift was received by the Healthcare Cost Containment Committee and will be used for worksite health and safety activities to benefit district employees in the amount of $200. The next was a very generous gift from Vance and Julie Valles, I believe is the name, of $2,400 to cover the expenses for the National History Day in Washington, D.C. Very generous of them and we thank them very much for that.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Mr. Schneider.
I move that we accept the gifts as read with our sincere thanks.
And seconded by Ms. Gualyumi. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None. The motion carries 500. And I believe the group is actually down in Washington, D.C. at National History Day as we speak. So that's a very timely gift. Thank you. And that will take us to item number six, the consent agenda. Dr. Mark McLaughlin.
Good evening. Tonight, under teacher nominations, we have two. Emily Isaac, music teacher at Reed's Ferry Elementary School, and Kimberly Meyer, special education teacher at Merrimack High School. In addition, we have the following teacher resignations. Sandra Wyatt, fifth grade teacher at the Mastercola Upper Elementary School, and Keith Conley, special educator at Reed's Ferry Elementary School.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Vice Chair Barnes.
I move we accept the consent agenda as presented.
And a second by Mr. Schneider. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? None. The motion carries 500. So that takes us to item number seven, Health Trust application and membership agreement. I would invite to the table Ms. Debbie Clayton, the benefits coordinator from Health Trust for the Merrimack School District. As you'll recall, at our last meeting, when we took up this topic, there were a number of questions that the board had. And Ms. Clayton was nice enough to agree to come tonight to help to respond to some of those questions that we had so that we can move a decision forward as it relates to the agreement. So Ms. Clayton, thank you so much for being here. Is your mic on, Ms. Clayton? Can you just hit the button and make sure the green light lights up?
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't sure which one. So I was given the questions in advance regarding the recent, what we had recently sent you regarding the participation agreement. We have done these throughout the years periodically in light of, you know, recent events of the fact that we've realized we hadn't done them in quite some time. It was time to get our legal visas together to get them done again. So I'll simply go through the questions that have been provided to me, answer them simply, and then I'll get into more detail after that. So the first question that was given to me was, was there any change to the benefits the district is able to offer to its employees by signing this new contract? And the answer to that is no. If the district asked of the district's options, if we don't renew the membership agreement, I'll explain further on that if the district chose to not sign this agreement, you would be in violation of the bylaws and therefore you would lose your eligibility to be a Health Trust member. The terms of agreement, specific end dates are not listed in this agreement, but that is highlighted on the bottom of page three and I'll, again, I'll review that. And concerned about the district's potential exposure based on what plans are offered through Health Trust. So there's no term date. This agreement is not going to bring you anywhere into the future where you're going to be locked in absolutely anything whatsoever. So let me explain in further detail. Health Trust as an organization is a nonprofit public sector risk pool and we are governed by Chapter 5B pooled risk management programs. And in their list that in order for a group to participate, standard organizations of operation, you must be governed by a set of bylaws. And we are in fact governed by a set of bylaws which were sent to you. In the bylaws, it states that in order to participate in our, to be, for membership in Health Trust, you must complete an application and participation agreement. It also says a wide variety of other things in here that you maintain flexibility in your benefit choices. You're going to get your renewal information every year. If you choose to change your benefits at renewal or off of renewal, all of those guidelines are listed here in the bylaws. As well, if at any point on page eight, it indicates that if you chose to leave Health Trust altogether, we would just require a 60-day advance notice to do so. So the agreement is not binding you in any way in terms of what your benefit selection or choices are that you offer to your employees. In terms of your benefit offerings, every, the district is what we consider a July renewal. So this, your July renewal cycle is a two-step process. We submit a guaranteed maximum rate in the fall, so then a rate letter is set at that time. Then in the spring, the board revisits the rate, so you get another rate letter at that time. And then at that time, we also will ask the district to sign what we call a transmittal. That's really your contract year to year or even month to month if you see the need to change plans throughout the year. The Affordable Care Act does require that if a group wants to make plan changes at their anniversary, they require a 30-day advance notice. If it's off of anniversary, it's a 60-day advance notice. So changes can be made at any point during the year as long as you meet those advance notice requirements. In terms of plan offerings to assist the district in avoiding the Cadillac tax, we offer a wide variety of medical plan choices, both that cost more than what you currently offer here at the district as well as many that cost less. But my initial calculations, we have a great team of individuals at Health Trust that have been working on the ACA for many years. And we've developed a calculator, calculator, sorry, Cadillac tax calculator tool to estimate a group's potential exposure. And the district, if you have heard reports from the Cost Containment Committee year after year, has been very, very active in assisting in containing the costs of the district overall. And by plugging in a 5% average rate increase for the past seven years, I see that the district's current Matthew Thornton Blue HMO benefit as it exists today, without making any benefit changes to it, would avoid the tax. So you have lots of flexibility in terms of plan offerings and choices between now and if and when the Cadillac tax is implemented for January 1 of 2018, that you could make adjustments to your plans to avoid the tax. But as of today, when I plug in your Matthew Thornton Blue rates into that calculator tool, it is not exposed to the tax. Did that address everyone's questions and are there any additional questions?
Thank you. I will ask that question myself. Does the board have any questions? Mr. Powell.
So just to summarize, Debbie, to, to put it all in a nutshell, the document that we have in front of us is basically a membership application to the group. It has nothing to do with the cost of our benefits that we provide or the terms of the benefit package or anything like that. It's just getting us in the door, so to speak.
No, it just says, I want to be part of Health Trust and everything it offers. And then it in turn tells you what your requirements are as an employer group. So meet all the ACA requirements, et cetera, follow our guidelines, whether it be the bylaws or our Benefits Administrator Manual about timely submission of paperwork and cancellations and things like that. It's just saying, we want to be in and we're going to agree to do all the things set forth.
Perfect. Thank, thank you very much. And I don't know if you heard the collective sigh that came from this side of the table when you said that as of right now, it looks like we can avoid the Cadillac tax. That has been weighing heavy on us, so thank you very much.
Any other questions? I actually had one. And it relates to the Cadillac tax. So we offer three tiers or three different plans, right? We've got the Matthew Thornton, which you referenced, but we also have a point-of-service plan and an indemnity or JY plan. So we've been, as you noted, working very hard to encourage people to choose. Each one of those is more expensive going up the list. And we've been working to educate people and encourage people to choose plans that work for their families, but that might be lower cost. Now, you hadn't mentioned the point-of-service plan or the indemnity plan and we still have a mix of folks, granted somewhat lower, that are engaged in those plans. Can, can you talk a little bit about those plans and Cadillac tax potential impacts?
I can, I can tell you that those are slated to hit the Cadillac tax, both of them, of course, the indemnity plan much sooner at a much higher rate than the Blue Choice point-of-service plan. However, in terms of indemnity plans, there's no way that we feel any of our indemnity plans will avoid the tax in 2018. But I know that there are certain copay slash deductible to prescription drug copay type changes that you may be able to make to the Blue Choice plan in the future. It may not avoid it completely, but it may help lower your exposure.
Okay. Thank you. That's helpful. I appreciate that. And I would just make an observation related to the agreement that occurred to me as you were talking about the notice period of one month at the July renewal and two months off cycle. The reality is, the way that we have contracted in order to provide these benefits to our employees, the collective bargaining agreements that we have require us to work with our educators in order to make any changes as it relates to these. And none of those would happen without 30 or 60 days advance notice anyway. And so I really think the, the level of flexibility that exists within the agreement is more than frankly, we probably even need. But, but it's appreciated. Are there any other questions or comments for Ms. Clayton? Wow, quick. I want to thank you for coming and helping to clarify for us so that we can move this process forward.
Anytime.
And all that you do for the district.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
And the gift that we received tonight. Yeah. Forgot to note, the gift from Health Trust. Thank you very much. So that will take us then to item number 7B, board action on the Health Trust application and membership agreement. So at this point, seeing as we have no additional questions related to the agreement, I think it's appropriate perhaps that we take up the decision in terms of moving forward with the application and membership agreement. Mr. Powell.
Marge, is there, I know there's a deadline. What is the deadline?
The deadline is August 1st.
Is August 1st. So would we want to follow our practice and put it on the two-week?
We could. If you're not, if anybody's not comfortable and wants to motion to table this, we could and would still have time at our July meeting to take it up. My thought was the fact that we had received the material before our last meeting, discussed it. We've had the two weeks. We got questions answered that really, we're not waiving the two-week rule that we followed it.
Right. That's what I was thinking, yeah.
However, if you wanted, based on what the superintendent said about the timeframe, there is time still to take it up at a later date.
The other question I have is who would we be appointing to sign for the district? Would it be yourself or the chair?
It is the chair that signs, is the authorized official signature, and I am the one who delivers the agreement.
Gotcha. Then I move that we authorize the chair to sign on the behalf of Merrimack School District, the renewal agreement with Health Trust that was presented to us.
And that's seconded by Vice Chair Barnes. Would you like to speak to it?
Just real quickly to reiterate that this doesn't lock us into any financial obligations. It's just a, as I said, get you in the door type of thing, and then we deal with benefits at a later time.
Great. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, the motion carries, 5-0-0. Thank you, everyone. And that takes us to item number eight on tonight's agenda, second reading of the restraint slash seclusion policy. And I will invite to the table our Director of Special Services, Mr. John Fabrizio. And I will look to him and the superintendent to lead this discussion.
Good evening and thank you. I thought the crowd was here to see my presentation, but I think they have all left me.
They're at home watching on TV. There you go.
So tonight, I had several questions that came up from the notes. And I went through the notes, and the process that I'll follow is I'll look at basically the policy. And there's a lot of detail to this policy. It's rather long. It used to be 10 pages, it used to be nine pages, now it's 10 with some of the edits that we made and some of the adjustments to it. So we have an even number. A few of the questions were related to our procedure. And I talked about that before, that this is policy, is what this is. Along, after this, we will go into the forms, the process, how are tracking records, how are tracking the amount of restraints. And that's all part of what our yearly review process will have to take place. That's within this policy that we are required to do that. That's why I'm here tonight, because this is the second, the second year of our policy, and this is actually a reauthorization of it, basically because of some of the laws that changed. But we already had this policy in place. It now is, includes seclusion to it. So we will, again, adopt all of our forms and process that we currently had in place to add those new terms and the new pieces. So I'm just gonna, I'm gonna walk through. I'll kind of state what the question was from the board member, and then I'll go through and highlight where that would be found in the policy and what the change would be, if that's okay. So the first... The first question was done by Board Member Powell. He asked for clarification on page one with preventative strategies. And what we did was I went back and I talked to some of committee members about this one. And I said, "Okay, why did we have that language? And what was it? Was it to say that," I think the clarification was, Board Member Powell asked, "Does this really put the emphasis on the parent to have to do the assessments and things like that?" And it wasn't clarified. But what came out of that, so the new language, what we changed it to is it was, "Additionally, the parent or guardian will be asked to share relevant information with the school personnel. The parent and/or the district may require, and/or conduct assessments for students who may cause potentially dangerous situations." And the reason for that explanation is, it's not always a school that would conduct the assessment on that. Sometimes it could be at a hospital with a health risk assessment or something that may happen that. So it may be that the school asks, "Can you take your child to be evaluated to make sure that, and have a risk assessment?" It wouldn't be something that we would conduct internally. So it is a shared responsibility there. So the new language would, would hopefully encompass that shared responsibility between both of us. And then the next, the next one, Board Member Powell asked, intentional physical contact to the beginning of the first two sentences on page three. And again, this was added, so the new language on this on page three would say, intentional physical contact does not include the use of seat belts, safety belts, and similar passenger restraints during the transportation of a child or a motor vehicle. And then E, intentional physical contact does not include the use of force by a person, defining him herself and a third person from what the staff member's responsible believes to be, an imminent use of unlawful force for a child, when the actor uses a degree of such force which she or she's responsible believes is necessary for such purposes as the actor does not immobilize a child or restrict the freedom of movement from the torso, head, arms, legs of the child. So again, what was added there was intentional physical contact does not include. That stem was added to all of them to have consistent format on that page. And then the next one, again, from Board Member Powell, we asked on page nine under the section paragraph, annual review process. And again, just some formatting, and the edits were made to that, and the Roman numerals were fixed during that process on page three. And then on page four, Mrs. Gulyami asked if there was disclaimer anywhere that included intentional physical contact around the child's head. And this, again, really, there isn't any disclaimer around the child's head, but with this, with this, there really is, in our training of CPI, it talks about techniques, safety for the head, and again, in our process of the selected training that we have, that is all embedded in the training about how to protect the head, how to hold the child, how to do all those pieces in those situations. So it is part of our, more of the process of training than it is highlighted in the actual policy itself. And then, again, the next question would be on page three. Who's trained and not trained in the building? And then this relates, again, to, you know, who's trained, not trained in things. Currently, I went back and, again, the nice thing about having three readings sometimes is you have an opportunity to ask questions and go back and dig a little deeper. And what I did was I called the training facility, which is CPI, or Crisis Prevention Institute. And lo and behold, we have the ability to be able to track all of our certified educators and trainers. And basically, when we submit to have the certificates sent to us, they have a chronological record of who's been trained over the past years. And I went back, I went back to look at who are our current trainers. And currently, right now, we have 16 trainers in the district, is what we have right now. And many of these trainers are in key roles. So the question was, how do they know who is trained? Often in crisis situations, you would call the office. You would call the guidance, the guidance department. You would call the behavior specialist. Those key people in our buildings are trained, and that's who we continue to, and many of them are the trainers. We have, you know, our behavior specialists, the elementary level, they're both trainers. Our, two of our system principals are trainers. Our guidance people are trainers, and we try to use them so they're in the key roles, and they really are those people that are definitely trained. And then beyond them, we have, we've trained over, over the last three years, over 200 staff members. So we're building capacity as we go. And I have the ability to know who those are right now and be able to work with CPI. They've set up myself and administrator assistant in my office to be able to access that database with a code to be able to get in and look at who our trainers are. So it's a much better place. And I didn't know that before the question was asked, so thank you, because it led me to a new place to, to dig a little deeper about how can I track this. And it's, it's part of, so when the training is complete, that one of those 16 trainers submits a roster to CPI to have the certificate sent to us and therefore creates a database of who is trained and when they were trained. So it's, it's good that we have that now. Next question referred to prohibitive dangerous restraint techniques, and after there was notification or disclaimer and physical restraint techniques crossed. So this one got a little more technical. And as is, I had to dig a little bit deeper for this one. And the nice thing about it, there was, I included an RSA in my, in the board packet this week, that looked at RSA 627:6. And what that talks about is, "A teacher or person otherwise entrusted with the care or supervision of a minor for special purposes is justified on the premises to use necessary force against such a minor when the minor creates a disturbance or refuses to leave the premises, or when is necessary for the maintenance of discipline." So under that law is really the creation of why we can be able to use restraint or seclusion in a building under circumstances of disturbance or danger to themselves and others. So that's why I included that law, because it lays the basis for why you can, you can do this. So I hope that that explains the kind of disclaimer is, yes, it can be a criminal offense, but however, educators, educators are protected by the law saying that we can act in a situation to keep children safe in our buildings. And then, I believe, and again, I think all the other ones we went through. And again, there was a reference to if the policies include documentation that parents were notified of physical restraint, seclusion, and their possible, possible, their reactions to that. That was a question that was asked by Board Member Gulyami. And I believe the, the answer to that, like in the general statements, that's part of the process too. Like every time there is, there are stipulations on the amount of days that they're going to have to report. That's all part of this policy, and that stays within that. So the answer is yes, they will be notified if a child is restrained, secluded. And then Chairman Ortega asked a question around a couple, a couple just typographical errors. And there was, on page five, there was a, there was a colon before the U that was removed on page five. And then, then the bigger question was on page six, and it was, the old language was, "The Merrimack School District shall ensure all appropriate personnel are trained in the use of physical restraint procedures and seclusion. Staff is trained in nonviolent crisis intervention program, CPI, and its equivalent as determined by the superintendent of schools and her designee." Chairman Ortega asked, basically said that the idea of all appropriate personnel was his concern, that it wasn't really descriptive enough of knowing who and when, very similar to Mrs. Gulyami's question. And I think what that was, was, and so I've updated the language to say, "In the Merrimack School District, under the direction of the superintendent, the director of special services, and the building principal, key personnel will be trained in the use of physical restraint procedures and seclusion. Staff trained, staff will be trained in nonviolent crisis intervention programs, CPI, and as equivalent as determined by the superintendent or his designee." So, and I believe that answers all the questions that were not answered the other night. And if there is any further or any that I did not answer, please feel free to ask.
Wonderful. Are there any questions or comments from Mr. Fabrizio? Ms. Gualyumi?
I'd like to say thank you, because I think you very thoroughly went through all of the comments that I had heard from our last session. So thanks for doing your research and coming back to us. The other question I had regarding those that are trained and, and as you had said, you had kind of found out how, a way that you can track it. And is there a way that the buildings will know that as well, that you can distribute that so that other staff members know who those?
We had a conversation about that. I actually had a conversation with one of the principals about this when I went back. I said, "Tell me your process and procedure." And in the building I talked to, they have, they call it their crisis team. And they have the, they know their crisis team, and they have, you know, we've spent a lot of times over the years, I'm talking about our handheld radios, more than I'd like to remember sometimes. And I think that with our handheld radios, they are pretty saturated around our buildings. And they're able to say, "I need a crisis team two, room five." And they're able, that's the alert. Those are the trained staff, and they know that. In another building, it's called by the program that they, by the program that they all work under. So there's different processes in different building, and it is their response team that goes. And within that response team, they have trained personnel.
That makes sense.
I am not going to say that it doesn't need to be probably tightened up a little bit in our process and our procedure. And we're going to talk about that when we get to our forms and the how. I think that the question I have is, do we know interbuilding? Not within the building, I think we're doing okay. If you ask my opinion, I think we're doing fine within our building. The question is, if we need a crisis team to go from building to building, those pieces, could we identify those teams more district-wide? I don't think we're there yet. I think that it's a place that I'd like to go with, with this group. And as I said, I had a committee that was pretty vast across all the buildings, and I think they would be the group to talk to about, "How do we do this?" And have it somehow using technology available to people, if it means on the common drive or some way to have an available list for people that could be updated and currently used. As we update our policy each year, update that list and make that part of our process.
Okay. And then I have another question. And I know we had a policy, it's now been expanded
Yeah.
For some of these other requirements. Does, does that mean that, are we really expecting an increase in, let's say, training, for example? Is that something we should be on the lookout, you know, next budget year? You know, is training going to increase, or is this just kind of, or not so much? I just was curious what to expect.
Yes and no is always a question on that one. I think that, I think, I think there's a whole piece of seclusion that we have to work on the training piece of that, because that's new language to a lot of people and a new, a new piece of this policy. So there has to be some kind of building-based, first of all, unveiling of the policy once it's approved. And then secondly, how does that follow up? And how do we train people in doing that? There is a cost to it. The CPI books are rather expensive. And I think that you may, you may hear me come around during budget time and say, "I need more of, an increase in some of my specialized staff training. It's already part of my budget. I'm going to look at that and see, you know, maybe I need to increase a little bit just to buy the books." And that's really what it is. The trainers, we've been able to maintain and use professional development funds and those pieces to keep our training, our trainers up in doing that. That may be a piece that I think is in place, because that comes from other funds. But I think the supplies and of the books and the, and the substitutes and things like that, those are all pieces that are an impact. Yes, they are.
That's what I thought I was hearing. So thanks.
Any other questions? I had one, and it's really just a wordsmithing comment to perhaps consider. And it relates to the question that I had. I like what you did in section I, "In the Merrimack School District, under the direction of the superintendent and director of special services and principals, key personnel will be trained." I'm just wondering if "under the direction" is the right wording and maybe at, and you can take this as something to mull over before the third reading. But I was thinking maybe "at the discretion" of the superintendent and director of special services. In other words, are they going to be trained under your direction or at your discretion? Right? You're going to determine who will be trained and who won't be, right? No need to respond, just something to take under consideration. But that's my understanding of that paragraph. Yes, Mr. Snyder?
My problem with the word discretion is, is that it could mean she would decide certain people maybe are there but not need to be trained. I mean, I think the idea is she, there needs to be some, some direction that says, "The people that'll be responsible will be trained, and those that are chosen to be trained is really what's under the discretion." Not, you know what I mean? Those, it made it, when you use the word discretion without a bound on it, it sounds like she can decide whether or not somebody needs to be trained at all, but still be responsible. And maybe that's what you're saying. I don't know.
Yeah. Ms. Gualyumi has her hand up.
Maybe oversight?
It works. So the way it was worded before was, "All key personnel will be trained." And part of the concern was both in terms of budget, time, et cetera, and that we would be able to do all. And it was all appropriate personnel, and that had no definition. Right? So part of the wording here is to say that appropriate So part of the wording here is to say that appropriate is really being determined at a point in time. I think the end state goal, we all agreed when we were talking last time, is that ideally, anybody that's coming into contact with children during the course of the day would have training and, and be trained. The reality is, this is a policy that is going to be reviewed annually. It says it right in here, we're going to review it annually. And we won't be able to get there, you know, we can't go from zero to sixty overnight, right? So the fact that we have sixteen trainers in district, two hundred employees already trained, that's great progress. But any additional that we train, I believe what we want to say is, will be trained at the discretion of administration. And so that's the only reason I'm questioning the word "under the direction" of, because it leads me to believe that they're being trained by you as opposed to at your discretion. Yes, go ahead, Vice Chair Barnes.
I'm hearing everything, and I think I might have compromised language. How about in the Merrimack School District? The Superintendent, Director of Special Services, and Principals will elect the key personnel to be trained in the use. And I think that takes care of it, because it tells who decides. But then, as far as who does, I think it takes care of it.
Okay.
Okay. Just a thought.
I like it. Again, it's really just for, to be taken under advisement. Superintendent?
Yeah, and I, and just at the same time, that Vice Chair Barnes is working on it, I had just used the phrase "is designated by", because I, I think we would confer and we would determine who would be best for that particular year. So it would be a designation. But we'll, we'll just go back and reorder it. But the conversation helps in coming up with the end product.
Sausage making.
Armchair lawyers.
So with that, I would like to say, echo Ms. Gualyumi's. Thanks for the thoroughness of your note-taking and follow-through on all of the comments that we made. I think it's impressive that we are on the second reading of a ten-page policy and really only have a small number of, of notes. I've seen this go very, very differently. So I would say, great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments all too. Thank you.
Yes, Superintendent.
And just to make sure, so it would be my intention to have this as an item on July thirteenth, rather than the consent agenda, because we want to pull back and take care of letter I. So it will be an item. And if you come up with anything else between now and then...
You're off.
Oh, pardon me. If you come up with anything else between now and then, please give it to me, but we will prepare to have it as a line item on the July thirteenth agenda.
Wonderful. So thank you. And that takes us now to item number nine on tonight's agenda. Request for additional preschool staff and furniture. Item A is Legal Counsel's Response to Utilizing a Designated Capital Reserve Fund to Address the Request. And I will turn this over to the Superintendent.
Thank you. So the attorney that was used for this purpose is Attorney Minutelli from the Wadley Law Firm. And so she says, "You have inquired whether the district can use fifty-three thousand eight hundred sixty-nine dollars fifty cents from a capital reserve fund for the purpose of hiring a preschool teacher and two paraeducators, and purchasing furniture for an additional special education preschool classroom." Her opinion is that the capital reserve funds can be used for those purposes. The capital reserve fund was established in two thousand for the purpose of meeting, quote, "any unanticipated expenses of educating educationally disabled children," end quote. The district has seen an unanticipated increase in the number of preschool children who have been identified as having educational disabilities under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. As a result, there is insufficient space in the classes offered in the existing special education preschool program, and it is necessary to add an additional classroom for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year. Therefore, this expenditure is an unanticipated special education expense, and the funds from the capital reserve can be used to hire the staff and purchase the necessary furniture. And then, if you so chose, she offered an amendment or a motion.
Mr. Powell?
I, I didn't hear my question in there. The, the specific question that I had asked, and that was regarding the non-special needs children, the fact that the money is going to be earmarked for them as well.
And I went further and discussed that with her. And the answer was, "In order for the program to exist, the typical, typical children have to be in that setting. That is a part of the requirement in order for you to have this preschool environment on campus." Therefore, it's a bona fide expenditure.
That's all I needed.
Any other questions or comments on this? Mr. Snyder?
So are we discussing the topic in general, or just what the Superintendent shared with us?
We are discussing item number A, the Legal Counsel's Response. We can now move on if there are no further questions on that, which is, board action on the request. So I believe we've had all of our questions related to this, or some of our questions related to this asked. And so I think it's time for the board to move on this item. Vice Chair Barnes?
I move to expend fifty-three thousand eight hundred sixty-nine dollars and fifty cents from the capital reserve fund established in two thousand created to meet unanticipated expenses of educating, education, educating educationally disabled children for the purpose of hiring preschool staff and acquiring furniture necessary to equip a preschool classroom to educate additional unanticipated preschool children with disabilities.
Is there a second to that motion? I will second the motion. Vice Chair Barnes, would you like to speak to it?
I would. I think based upon our discussions from a couple of weeks ago, the option two seemed to be the, the no-brainer for a couple of reasons. You know, we, we will also be halfway to establishing a preschool at Thornton's Ferry Elementary. We will have an morning session preschool, which is ideal for helping those students that we are targeting with this program. And honestly, even what we call the typical children are usually preferred for that slot as well. So I think it kills a lot of birds with one stone. Honestly, I made, the motion that I made was, was vetted to make sure it was covering all our legal necessities. So, you know, for that reason, I think, I think we should go with option two. And my motion does support the option two that was presented to us.
Is there discussion? Mr. Snyder?
So, having not been here last week, I was a little bit of a disadvantage, so I played catch-up this week. Now, my understanding based on the discussion and what I heard was, is that if this was potentially a normal year, where there was unanticipated, you know, enrollment, we needed additional staff, we may have turned to our normal operating budget to say, "Is there enough funds in our budget to be able to, to be able to cover the cost?" But because of the way we did budgeting this year, based on staffing, trying to take into account the reduced cost after retirements, that kind of money doesn't exist in our budget. So that much I understand. So I started asking, you know, asking myself whether it made sense, based on Davis's question, which I saw from the minutes, about whether it made sense to go and get all of the funds out of the capital reserve fund to be, to be able to spend this, knowing that the class was a mix of regular students and special ed students. The thing that came to mind was, is that in this particular case, there also is a revenue that's going to be coming into the district because of the fact that the non-special ed students would be paying a tuition of sorts for this program. However, because, and, and in a normal thing, in a normal, if we would have gotten the money out of the normal budget, we would have just taken the revenue, put it back in, and it would all have sort of evened out at the end of the year. However, because we're pulling the full amount from the capital reserve fund, there's no way for us to replenish the capital reserve fund, potentially from any revenues that we receive. So one of the questions I did coming to the meeting is, I asked Matt if he could give an estimate of what the revenue would be coming into the district from the non-special ed kids, from the adding of this class. Because, and I'll say where I'm going with this before Matt goes, is that my intent would be that based on the revenue that we might be seeing, that what we pull out of the capital reserve fund would be the option two, which I agree, option two is the correct one. I would like to see a motion that takes that fifty-three thousand eight hundred, eight hundred dollars or so, minus what we anticipate the revenue to be. And that way, we would pull from the capital reserve fund only the special ed portion of that class, and we would be able to have the revenue that we would receive cover the remaining amount that we would need to make that happen.
Okay. So in answer to your question, and I appreciate the heads up, because I wouldn't have been able to pick this number out of my brain somewhere. John and I had a conversation, and for a four-day program, if everybody who was designated to go went to the four-day program, we would be generating around thirteen thousand six hundred dollars during that time period. However, there are some variables that John can address with you right now.
And again, that is, that is if they all came to the four-day program, four days a week, and they were there full-time. Parents may choose two days. And if we didn't have enough enrollment from those typical students coming in, typically developing students, then we would have some, we would have two, two kids that would come two days each in, in doing that, in doing that. So if full enrollment, if we cover all four days, if everyone's there four days, yes, that is the figure. But there's variables that some kids come three days, some kids come two days, based on what they sign up to come for.
Is there a minimum, I mean, for example, I mean, I, I know that that's the best-case amount sort of scenario. Is there a number that you would be confident that you would get, like, is five thousand dollars? I mean, I mean, what I'm trying to do ultimately here is show that the, the, the revenue would be recognized somehow into this process. You know, if it's not thirteen thousand, if it's five thousand, or something like that. I just want to show, from a district's perspective, that we're recognizing the revenue as part of this request. That's all. That's my intent. I mean, is there, is there a baseline number that you would assume that would be? I mean, Matt, would, would five thousand be a, or cut that thirteen thousand in half? Make it like sixty-five hundred or something like that?
If you did that, that would probably be reasonable. We also have some parents that would quit halfway through and not pay the remainder of the tuition, or not pay back tuition. So if you put in a factor of you only collect probably fifty percent on the dollar, I think we'd probably be comfortable with that. What do you say, John?
Yeah, I think that's about, that's, that's comfortable with that.
So if we, if we rounded down and took sixty-five hundred, that would be about fifty percent of the thirteen?
Yeah, right.
So that, I mean, and to close my thought, that's, even though it's not significant, it's, I believe it's important that we recognize the revenue as part of this. So we, sixty-five hundred may not sound a lot, but from a capital reserve fund that we cannot replenish, based on the revenue, I think that that was what I would like to see occur.
Okay. There were hands up all over the table. Who would like to go first? Mr. Powell?
John, I just want to clarify something I thought or heard you say, that the, the number that Matt gave us, the thirteen thousand, is with full enrollment, five, five days a week, correct? But then you said something about there may be students that only come three days a week, or, or two days a week. Is there an offset enrollment to that? Would you then find someone? So then, in theory, we could be at full enrollment.
Yes, in theory, we could be, but the reality of always being at full enrollment all year round at three years old sometimes isn't, isn't, isn't accurate. And I wouldn't want to give a number that says, "We're going to make this much revenue." That's the maximum amount of revenue. I just wanted to clarify that.
Sure. No, 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 no.
That's maximum amount.
No, I, I totally get that. The other comment that I want to make is that I agree with, with what Board Member Schneider is, is discussing here, is open up the discussion on it, because I think as a board, we have, especially since we're agents to expend, we have a fiduciary responsibility to make sure that the money is spent in the way that it was meant to be spent. Yes, five thousand, sixty-five hundred, whatever number we come up with, is not a, a huge amount. But it does show that we are taking this seriously and not just pulling money out of the fund indiscriminately. So Andy, I appreciate you diving into that. And Matt, I appreciate the help that, that you've given as well. Oh, and you too, John.
Oh, by the way. Ms. Gualyumi?
No, I appreciate that, Andy. And that was something when we got into it, when we had the discussion a couple of weeks ago, it was definitely of concern to me, because it's, it, it just wasn't sitting right. And we're going in, and there's going to be this extra, and it's, you know, with accounting practices and so on and so forth. And however much it is, if, if that's money that we really don't need or can, can account for through the revenue that we'll be getting, then I feel much better about it. And I think that the methodology is right. We're looking at what's the most we could possibly get, what's the least amount we can get, and where's the level of risk that we should be taking? And it sounds like we're taking a, we're not going with, or being overly optimistic on getting the best-case scenario from a revenue perspective, but something that we'll probably be able to live with and work within the budget that we have. So I think that if you're comfortable with, let's say, the sixty-five hundred, the fifty percent less, I'm wondering if Vice Chair Barnes would be willing to, to redo her motion to, to decrease that amount by the sixty-five hundred? And if Chris would then resecond it? That's what I was wondering.
Before we do that, I wanted to ask some clarifying questions as well. I understand the, the sentiment fully, and the fiduciary responsibility as it relates to the capital reserve fund, and, and recognize that. The, I guess the one thing I would question is, we said, "We have no ability..." Somebody said, "We have no ability to replenish these capital reserve funds." And I don't believe that to be a true statement. I think that if we were to put a question, a warrant article on the ballot, we can put more money back into the capital reserve funds, right? Okay, just, I'm, I'm just saying.
But I think what he was getting at was that we can't take any extra that's left over and put it back into the capital reserve.
Not immediately.
In the same way that we're talking about taking it out now, we can't use the same methodology to put that back. I understand. You're right.
And so what we're talking about is, is sixty-five hundred, it might be thirteen grand. My, my question is, is would we not be more fiscally responsible in taking out the amount, knowing what our actual revenues were, and then putting a question on that, that put that money back? Where if we found ourselves short in that fund, more money back if there were surplus? But, but the question is, is how comfortable are we with any of these numbers, really? It's a, it's a moving target. Ms. Gualyumi?
Well, with that methodology, we could actually even put the exact amount. We could suggest to the public that we put the, that exact amount back in of the revenue that was, would be gained, and we'd have the hindsight as twenty-twenty to be able to do that.
And then we know, my, my meaning is that we then know we have the revenue to cover the costs of, of the teacher and the furniture. Whereas if we only expend, you know, this amount minus the sixty-five hundred, we might still be short, right? Mr. Snyder?
Just one final thought, and then I'll stop. You're right. I mean, everything that everybody said is correct, that you could take the full amount out of the capital reserve fund and put a warrant article to put the, the revenue amount back in. You could. But you run the risk that taxpayers would say, "I don't want to put it back in there. I want it to go back to reduce taxes." So my, my goal was, is to do something relatively prudent. Pick a number that, that staff felt comfortable with, based on the history that we've got. Do it once, not revisit it, and make, and next year plan prop, you know, adequately based on what we see the rev, the population be for the preschool programs as we move forward. That was my intent. There's risk, there's a risk in what you just stated as, and as an option, just as much there is a risk if we over-undersessate. That's why I didn't go for the full amount. That's what.
Understood. Vice Chair Barnes?
Well, a couple of things I had written down. Obviously, we've been traditionally looking to make sure that we're budgeting for worst-case scenario and sensitive areas. To me, this is a sensitive area. I mean, it, there's such a lack of flexibility when we deal with special education. We don't, we, when we are looking at these estimates, I don't think you have a purchase... We don't, we, when we are looking at these estimates, I don't think you have a purchase order yet for a room of furniture. So we're estimating the cost at fourteen thousand one seventy. That's a moving number as well. So that, we're, we're also taking risks that they're going to, um, face costs higher than, than, um, what we're anticipating for supply. That also being said, we, you know, looking at the part-time salary, you know, if we're having trouble, you know, finding staff, that, that could also be a, a possibly moving number. We could end up with someone that has experience in the district and another district that will come in at a higher rate, because that's who's available to us, who can, who can do the job. So, you know, we're looking at, there, there are variables even in my motion that we have to accommodate for. And so for that reason, I wouldn't necessarily be all that comfortable, um, making the adjustment, although I respect it wholeheartedly. That being said, when we do go back to, um, if this does pass, which I hope it does, and we do go back to, uh, the taxpayers to look for the, um, replenishment of the capital reserve fund, uh, the things I hope that we'll be able to share with them is the amount of, um, revenue that went back to the general fund, and in anticipation that we'll be kind of asking for that money back to, to replenish this fund. So basically saying, well, based on the accounting practices we have to follow, really what we're looking for is not giving you that money back, but taking it back with, with, uh, a vote of the people. So it really actually gives us a great level of transparency, and we'll have that opportunity during budget time to do that, and also to be able to exhibit the importance of this capital reserve fund, and why it became so essential for us to operate the district this year. So I think it gives us a great case study to, to share in, um, in the spring as well, so. I would prefer to keep my original motion at fifty-three thousand eight sixty-nine fifty, giving us that, uh, flexibility in case things aren't what we project them to be, and that we need to go a little, um, harder to find the right people and the right equipment supplies to do the job right the first time.
Mr. Powell.
While I appreciate, um, your bringing that to light, the fact that we're using moving numbers, we do the same thing every budget season. And in fact, if I'm not mistaken, we're doing it with an even further period of time, not knowing how much these items are going to cost when the purchase orders are signed. So, um, I, I feel very comfortable with, um, going in with a lower number at this point. And correct me if I'm wrong, if worst-case scenario, um, Shannon's concern does come to fruition, that we can't find the furniture for X number of dollars, and we can't hire somebody for the amount that's in there, don't all we have to do is just make another motion to dip into the capital reserve fund and pull out the additional amount?
We can go to the well a second time on this.
Exactly.
Agents to expand.
Exactly.
Takes a three, three-fifth vote.
So I, I don't see as if there's any risk of us running short here, um, to be honest with you. So, um, with that, if, um, Vice Chair Barnes, um, feels strongly about not amending her motion, I would like to present an amended motion.
I think she said she wasn't interested in amending the motion, so I think we've got to vote on this motion, and then you can, uh, if it doesn't pass, you have the option of making a, a motion. Mr. Schneider, you had your hand up. We're making sausage here tonight.
Is that a problem?
No.
Oh, I'm just, okay.
All part of the process.
You know, this is, I've, I've been doing budget committee and budgeting for ten years now, in the district, pretty close. And there's no exact science in any of this that we do. But, and I understand the logic of, of putting a warrant article out to, to put money back into it, I get that. We could do that for any amount that we want to do. I just felt comfortable that if we, in the past, we as a district have, um, used the, the general fund to be able to handle these situations, and we find this year we can't, because of what we as a board chose to do when we created our budget. My intent was, is to say, if we don't have the money to pull, let's pull the money that we need, but take into account what we're going to be receiving. Even, and that's, and I, I purposely, because of the risk, would never go with the full amount because of all the things that were set. So in some ways, this is an estimate amount, the, the fifty-three thousand eight hundred dollars is an estimated amount. The revenue we're seeing is an estimated amount. I want the transparency of, of what we're trying to do to at least show that we're recognizing the revenue to an extent. That's it. You're right, we can certainly go back, we can make a, a motion, that's fine. At sixty-five hundred dollars, it drops down, what we would allocate down, down to what, about forty-eight thousand or something like that? Somebody was writing numbers. So, so for me, that's what I would prefer to see, is, is our direction here, based on all of our discussion. Just based on, on my history of doing budgeting and, and what I've seen and how we've handled in the past.
Understood. Is there any further discussion on the motion? If not, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries three to two, with, uh, Board Members Powell and Schneider in opposition. Yes, Mr. Powell.
Clarifying question.
Of course you can.
Ms. Gualyumi, do you, so your intention was to vote for the fifty-three thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars?
Correct. And what I would be looking for is the, I would be wanting to make a warrant to put the money back. That would be my, that would be my, um, intention.
Okay. I, I appreciate that clarification, because I, from hearing you talk, I thought you were going a, a different route.
No, I think, you know, after Chris made his point, I thought we basically, I don't have a problem going back to the taxpayers and saying, here you go, this is what happened, you know, please vote yes or no on that. But that would give an exact amount if there's that, um, that delta of what was on the revenue versus the expenditures.
Perfect. Thanks.
I do want to say that, that was a great discussion, though, in, in terms of how to handle this. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fabrizio.
Have a good evening. Thank you, everyone.
That takes us to item number ten on tonight's agenda, Board Member Authorization to Sign Fiscal Documents. We're about to enter, uh, the summer months when we meet, uh, much less frequently. We'll meet about half the amount of times that we normally meet. And, um, folks may notice that on every one of our agendas is an item where we take a moment to sign the manifest. Tonight, it's item number seventeen, which is a fiscal document authorizing, uh, the expenditures of the district. Uh, we do that on a regular basis. Uh, the business office cannot, uh, uh, send out a check until a quorum of the board has, has signed, uh, those documents. And when, when we meet less frequently, it becomes more difficult, and there are also other fiscal documents that, uh, the board is required to sign, uh, that require more timely authorization in order to stay current with, with our payments. The business administrator sent a, a memo, uh, to us at senior, or to the superintendent, and it's in our packets, and, um, I'll just read it, because I think it sums up exactly, uh, what we're talking about. "In order to facilitate the signing of the manifest during times of irregularly scheduled board meetings, such as in the summer, and to have this done in a timely fashion, the school board can take advantage of the provisions of the following law, RSA one ninety-seven colon twenty-three hyphen A. This could be done electronically by scanning or faxing of documents if the board chooses to take advantage of this delegation of duties." And in one ninety-seven colon twenty-three hyphen A, under treasurer's duties, it says, under Roman numeral one, "The treasurer shall have custody of all monies belonging to the district, and shall pay out the same only upon orders of the school board, or upon orders of the two or more members of the school board, empowered by the school board as a whole, to authorize payments." And so what I would like to do is make a motion, uh, to authorize, uh, two members, uh, to have this duty. So the motion would be, uh, to appoint, uh, Vice Chair Barnes and Board Member Gualyumi to be empowered by the school board to authorize payments in the signing of the accounts payable and payroll manifest for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen fiscal year. Mr. Powell. Okay. And I don't think I need to, uh, speak to this motion, uh, much more than, uh, Mr. Chevanel's memo, I think, uh, so clearly put it, but, uh.
I just, I just want to make sure we're okay for fourteen fifteen. I, I'm, was tonight, is tonight the last manifest that we have for the year?
No, we're, we're all set for fourteen fifteen. We have, we, we have, um, preliminary audits that happen in, um, in May. And this is one of the things that were brought up to us, uh, during the preliminaries. And, uh, it was something that they're okay with us fixing for next year. We can continue on as we have for the rest of this fiscal year.
Okay.
But come next fiscal year.
So this will be something that we have to visit again on a year, on any annual basis?
No, once you do the appoint, once you do the appointment, the appointment is.
Well, I understand that, but the players might not be the same.
Fifteen, sixteen, so this, this would need to be taken up annually. At, at the last meeting in June.
That's the motion you made.
That's the motion I made.
That's what you do. It'd almost be like a committee assignment, if you wanted to, with a vote.
Ms. Gualyumi.
Now, would we have, like, let's say, an alternate, like, if one of us were not available for any reason? Could be sickness, could be out of the country. Um, does this, would this allow us that alternate, or would it?
Well, as I, as I read the, the RSA, it says, "Upon the orders of the two or more members of the school board empowered." Now, that doesn't say that one might be an alternate, right? What that says to me is that we could designate three, but that three would have to sign, right? So to me, that's even more limiting than authorizing the two, right? But it doesn't say that there's an alternate necessarily.
It doesn't say there's, there's an alternate, but, um, I did ask the question.
Excellent.
And the, the answer is, if you want to designate somebody as an alternate, uh, you, you can, you can do that. And that would be totally acceptable to them, as long as it's voted on in public session in the same, same motion. So you have your two primary, and they understand how, you know, life is, and, uh, this would be totally, um, by the book, so to speak.
Okay.
They'd be fine with it.
So, yeah, is, is, are, are one of you willing to be an alternate?
Well, I think the three of us should be put down just in pairs.
Okay, so, so let me, uh, amend the motion, if I would, and I'd ask for, uh, the second to agree. So, the motion is to appoint Vice Chair Barnes and Board Member Gualyumi to be empowered by the school board to authorize payments in the signings, uh, signing of the accounts payable and payroll manifests for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen fiscal year, with Board Members Schneider, Powell, and Ortega as alternates.
So second.
Okay. Further discussion. Mr. Schneider.
I think this makes sense, because it's no different than if we get a call saying, can you please come down to the SAU office and sign it? Depending on who's out of the town on business, or vacation, or tied up and ill, or something like that, at least it, it covers it.
Although that one requires at least three.
Right, exactly. So that, it requires three on that one, but this one allows two.
Right.
But still gives a flexibility in case something like that happens.
Excellent. Yep, I agree. Wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Gualyumi. Great suggestion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll put the motion to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. The motion carries five zero zero. And that takes us to item number eleven, Title III On-Site Review Final Report. Dr. McLaughlin.
Thank you. So Title III is our federal grant that supports, uh, our ESOL education. ESOL is English for Students of Other Languages. So as a requirement of our accepting federal funds, we have to, uh, have a three, every three-year, uh, what's described as an onsite. It's similar to an audit, and, excuse me, it's seen, overseen by the, uh, New Hampshire Department of Education. In this case, the individual is Andrea Samozan Norton, who is the DOE Title III representative. So, uh, this past March was our third year, and so we, uh, entertained her in March. I just want to describe what the process entails, uh, because it's a pretty lengthy, pretty involved process. Prior to the onsite visit, which is, uh, which is scheduled, uh, with, uh, the DOE person months in advance of their coming. So prior to that, um, several things, many things need to be provided to, um, that individual, in this case Andrea, well in advance of the onsite, so that she can have time to look at our materials and to assess whether we're compliant or not. So, um, I'm just going to list for you the things that we need to provide. One is a self-assessment checklist. It's a, uh, five-page document, uh, that asks, uh, a district to assess its compliance on, um, a range of items from identification and placement of ES, ELL students, ESOL instructional services, assessment of ELL students, reclassification and exit of ELL students, uh, questions about, uh, the qualifications of our instructional staff, parent notification, budget, our local plan, and our, uh, willingness, evidence of our willingness, our attempt to work with private schools in our community. So, um, it's, um, not simply a matter of saying yes or no. If we say yes, we have to provide specific evidence of how we have been in compliance with all those things, and those need to be provided as well, so that when we say yes, it's matched with the evidence that we do the thing that we say we did. We have to also provide an equipment inventory, because everything that's provided to, um, that, all the funds that are given to us have to be allocated for the purposes for which they've been given. So if it's, um, money for, uh, Title III expenses, then we have to show that any equipment, computers, any technology, software, textbooks, uh, not textbooks, equipment, um, so, uh, document cameras, anything like that, um, that we need to classify as product, uh, owned by the Title III, so therefore the district. We have to supply a, a Title III monitoring rubric, which is a twenty-one-point, um, document that asks us to, um, provide evidence of our compliance with, um, everything from, uh, an updated home language survey to make sure, for instance, that, um, when we have a family identified, uh, as a, a second-language family, that we provide information in their home language. It, it's, uh, so evidence of that. Does a district have evidence that students who qualify were placed in appropriate level of service within thirty days of the beginning of the school year? And so we have to, that's an example of something that we need to provide parent notification for, so that with dates to match when they entered and when notifications went out. So we have to provide that. We have to provide our compliance plan, which codifies all of our processes. Example of student work, um, example of student assessments, an example of an updated home language survey, our ESOL referral procedures, parent notification forms, that's a big one to make sure that parents of students in, uh, our ESOL program are provided with timely information. Notification about services, information about whether they, uh, choose to receive the services or not, and then a form about that if you do not choose to accept the services. Parent communication templates, uh, ESOL discharge and follow-up procedures, instructional schedules of our, of our staff, uh, our ESOL teachers, to make sure that they are, um, attending to the needs of the students and the schools that they're assigned to, and ESOL job descriptions. So all of that material needs to be collected and then sent to, uh, the DOE, so that, um, that can be assessed prior to the actual onsite, which is a day. And then any questions that arise can be addressed either prior or during the onsite. On the day of the onsite itself, um, it's required that we have a prepared agenda. The, uh, individual who comes, again, Andrea Samozan Norton, um, wishes to meet with all of our ESOL educators. She asked to meet with selected students. Observations of educators with the students is required as part of that onsite. Meeting with the Assistant Superintendent, review of files. meeting with the Assistant Superintendent, review of files, and then a dialogue. That comprises the onsite. Following the onsite, there's a final report discussing any compliance issues and any recommended actions to be taken. And so that process takes some time, because as you can imagine, there's a literal boatload of information that they're trying to go through, so it takes some time. So the final report that we got indicates the following. There was a specific commendation for my assistant, Lynne Ferrand, and her predecessor, Desiree Alair, who in the previous two years, so it's a three-year cycle, in the previous two years, Des managed the program and then, and then Lynne in the last year, for maintaining what she described as airtight records on financial management of the grant. So that was a special commendation. And then our three ESOL educators, Sagita Clifford, Marina Garova, and Jessica Field, and I'm going to quote, for their knowledge and expertise that they bring to the program, striving to meet the individual needs of their LEP, that's Limited English Proficient Students, every day. I wanted to call out those people because they work very, very hard and are excellent teachers. And each time that we have an opportunity to showcase them in front of the DOE or anybody, we're proud to do so because they provide really excellent service to our ESOL population. So out of all of the body of the materials that we presented to the DOE for their, its review, there were four findings. One was that the Merrimack School District was advised to update its local service plan to reflect current ESOL programming and services. So that process is underway. What that means is that in the time since our initial plan and now, there may have been, and in fact have been, additions to our program, greater services, a different quality of services, and that needs to be reflected in an updated plan that needs to be presented to the DOE by September first. That was the only compliance issue. There were three recommendations. One, that the Merrimack School District engage in an annual review of its ESOL program. We do that informally, but our plan is to formalize that process more to make sure that we're even more ready for our next three-year onsite. It's also recommended that the Merrimack School District add English fluency to the current ESOL job description for obvious reasons, because if we're hiring personnel that support students in acquiring second language, second language, we want to make sure that they're proficient in English. So that's just a, an item that we're going to add to the job description. Rest assured, our current staff more than meets that requirement. And finally, a recommendation that the Merrimack School District, quote, "Consider adding an ESOL tab to the district webpage for the purpose of enhanced parental notification." In the three years since our last onsite, the requirement, or the expecta, not requirement, but the expectation that parents are even more, more efforts are put in place to make sure that parents are notified, provided good timely information. A, a big push is to make sure that we make efforts to provide information in a home language first, so that they can access information and then know what to do with that information. It's not a requirement, but it's a recommendation. So in the three years, you can see a change in the, in the federal DOE's expectations around parent service. So out of this tremendous body of information that they require, I think our district was, was pleased to have three recommendations and one finding of a compliance issue, and that relates to the, the redoing of our local service plan. So that is the summary of a very extensive process. I'm happy to take any questions that you have.
Hands are up. Vice Chair Barnes.
Actually, the one that stood out to me was the webpage recommendation, honestly. Well, a couple of things stood out to me. But the rec, the webpage makes total sense to me. I know we have, we had a couple of years ago, all the ESOL coordinators come before the board and talked about all the different languages that they face. And obviously, we're not going to find someone who is, who is versed in everything from, you know, say Mandarin to Hindi to Spanish, and so we need someone that's solid in English, can help those people navigate, who do have that as their first language at home. That being said, webpage makes total sense, because there's so many tools out there, just, like I used Google Translate a couple of weeks ago, just to help my daughter with a project for school. And there's so many tools out there that will help with, even down to dialects, that are on the web. So if they could just copy our English content and paste it into an app online, they will get the information from us they need. When we put it in a PDF form, when we put it in paper form, it's more difficult for them to be able to get that information readily translatable. So, you know, we can use the web as our, as our tool to be very effective in the communication with, with our parents. The other thing that stood out, surprised me, was that we have to do, on the compliance issue, that we're supposed to update local plans three to five years, and it was nineteen. I know that we have so many things that are, you know, not broken in our minds, and so we don't fix them, but that surprised me that it has to be so frequent in that it wasn't. So how long ago was the compliance requirements that we have to do updates every three to five years put into place, do you know?
So can you, can you just, I just want to be sure I'm understanding, so.
Yep, in the compliance, it says that local plans must be updated every three to five years or as needed to reflect current ESOL programming and services.
Right.
And I know that ours was done in nineteen ninety-six, so.
So what that means is our plan has been updated and modified a number of times since then. What hasn't happened is that it's not been submitted to the state, because up until recently, that hasn't been expressed as a requirement. So even as recently as our last onsite, that wasn't requested. So it, so that was a plan that was put in place kind of as a starter, and then I'm not really sure. I mean, it's their requirement now, and we're going to absolutely do that, but the implication is not that we haven't updated the plan in that amount of time. We've continued to do that, we're going to continue to do that. Again, we already have a team in place that's starting to, you know, make sure that we include everything that's been changed in the last year. But the, the thing that hasn't been done is that it hasn't been submitted to the state, because even as recently as three years, they didn't ask for that. So now they're asking for it, and we'll be able to do it.
So I guess the question I have is, is the requirement that as we change it, it is submitted? Or that we just have something that is dated on file within three to five years?
Well, I, you know, I can't tell you that I know exactly the answer to that question, so I'm certainly going to find out. Because if the expectation is that it's every three to five years, then we'll do that. And if, if it's not, you know, I, it's not clear, it wasn't clear in the, in the communication to us. So I'm not really sure, but what we do know is that we need to submit it by September first. So whether that means that we can hold off submitting it for three to five years from that date, I'm not sure. I just want you to be aware that we certainly have updated our, our, our plan since nineteen ninety-six. It just hasn't been submitted to the state.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it's very unfortunate, because the way that the state's finding reads, it gives the impression that that's the case, and, and it's good to know that it's not.
It's not the case.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Powell.
Mark, how many ESOL students do we have in the district?
K to twelve, we have approximately eighty-five to ninety.
Eighty-five to ninety?
Mm-hmm.
And how much money do we get from Title III, do you know off the top of your head?
Hmm. I would say about, this, this is what I look like when I do math in my head. I would say.
You can do it on your fingers if you want.
Yeah, between fifteen and eighteen thousand dollars.
Each school year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And the last question, and, and this probably, I, I know this is not going to be an answer you have off the top of your head, but how much does it cost us to follow the rules, so to speak? To do all of the compliance, to do all of the, the calculate? What I'm getting at is all, you know, all this quote-unquote free money that we get from the titles programs, you know, comes with strings attached. And it would, it would be nice, it, it would be interesting at budget time to find out how much this compliance costs us. Are we spending more than what we're getting? My guess in this particular program would be no, because I, I don't see how there's fifteen thousand dollars of, of paperwork that's involved. But, but, you know, making these changes that they're asking, how much is that going to cost us? And that's it. That's, that's all I wanted to say is, you know, free money is never free, and there is a cost involved.
Mr. Schneider.
Well, I'm glad Davis asked a question, because I was going to sort of, just to find a scoping. But I would assume that, do we have any instructors that are labeled strictly as ESOL teachers? Or is it just a component of their process?
We have three ESOL teachers in the district. Each one is responsible for two schools.
And, and those, funding of those does not get fulfilled by the state, it fills by our budget.
Our district budget.
So to answer the question you did, so we get eighteen thousand dollars or whatever the number is, but we expend three teachers' worth of salary in order to do this, so.
And per student, it works out to between, closer to a hundred fifty dollars per student, right, for the year? Any other questions or comments? Vice Chair Barnes.
I know we're crunching the numbers, but, you know, at the end of the day, we're here to provide our students a fair and appropriate education, and that does come at a cost when there is, when there are extenuating circumstances. And obviously, having English not be your first language is one. So I look at it as just, just a function of the job. If there's a resource that we can get to offset some of that, it's a benefit to us. So, you know, it doesn't come with strings, but we would be doing it anyway. I'm, I'm sure we would, we just wouldn't be doing some paperwork to go with it.
Mr. Schneider.
Yeah, just to be clear, I mean, I'm not saying we don't do it. I was just saying it's sort of ironic, the amount of funding we get back for something that we're required to do, even though it's the right thing to do, so.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I, I think we all share the sentiment that, for, for the money that we're getting, you know, the fact that we've got three teachers who are doing a great job in an administration that is, in fact, following process, being commended, and, you know, there's one finding that we didn't do something that they didn't heretofore tell us we were supposed to do is pretty darn good. Thank you. That takes us to item number twelve on tonight's agenda, Request to Hire at Will, Superintendent Chaffrey.
So what I'm coming to you for is to ask that you would have a motion in place to grant the administration the ability to offer professional staff contracts, conditional contracts, because we're going to have just two meetings in the summer, one on July thirteenth and one on August seventeenth. This is like a four-week spread, and we have probably, yeah, I would say about fifteen professional positions to hire. And we don't want good candidates to go to another district because we weren't able to offer them a conditional contract. So that practice has helped us a great deal in the past, and I would ask for that once again.
Wonderful. Vice Chair Barnes.
Um, just first, a couple of comments, I guess more questions. First comment, that it doesn't mean that if we, I think, three years ago, two years ago, three years ago, we ended up having to add a position because we had an influx of second graders. So it's not for new positions, it's only to replace positions where maybe someone resigned outside of our window of, of meeting twice a month. So if we need to add a position because we had an influx of population, that wouldn't apply to this. Right, unbudgeted positions. So that being said, we've probably done this about five, six years before we even got on the board, Chris, and this is our, we're into our sixth year on the board together. So it's always been a value to us, I think, when we can find people that are, are, you know, looking for employment and, and we can grab them. I think it's, it, it's, does us good to, to have this in place. So that being said, if, I'd like to make the motion, if you would mind, to grant administrators authority to offer conditional contracts to candidates for professional staff openings during the summer months.
Is that a second, Ms. Gualyumi? Second, do you want to speak to it further?
I do, just one more comment, and that is conditional contracts to candidates. It doesn't preclude us from having the normal consent agenda items that you hear every week, when we do have people coming on to the district, that we would vote in favor during a regularly scheduled period. So I think it's, it's a right fit for us.
Great. Any further discussion? Mr. Schneider.
Just a question for the superintendent. You said there's currently fifteen outstanding positions. Is that more than we're usually at at this point in the year, or is it about the same?
No, it's about the same.
About the same?
Mm-hmm.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, we'll put the motion to a vote. All those in favor of the motion to grant administrators authority to offer conditional contracts to candidates for professional staff openings during the summer months, say aye. Opposed, none, the motion carries five, zero, zero. That takes us to item number thirteen, Other Correspondence. Is there correspondence to come before the board? Ms. Gualyumi.
Um, I had a couple of items. One is that I received contact from a constituent outside of what we all received regarding allowing a student that was interested in walking at graduation to walk. And I also, in true transparency, I received two letters from two students at James Master Cola Elementary School. One was from Sam N., and she told me that she was happy to write me, and she likes math games. And then my second one was from Gavin A., and he wanted me to know that his mascot is a dragon, and he is learning multiplication.
Thank you, Ms. Gualyumi. Is there any other correspondence to come before the board? I wrote back to, to my students, I, I wish I had thought to include their, their we-delivers under correspondence. The other piece of correspondence that, that I received is an email and a phone call from WMUR asking for comment on the same topic that you mentioned earlier, the student in graduation. So seeing no other correspondence, comments, are there any comments from the board? Ms., oh, we'll go to the superintendent first.
I just wanted to announce about an event that's going to be happening on June twenty-sixth, which is an active shooter drill that we're going to be doing with the police department, the fire department, along with the assistance of the State of New Hampshire Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management. The event will happen at Merrimack High School from eight AM to two PM. It's our intention to also probably do an alert now message, even though we'll be out of school at the time, and we will not have any students participating. We still think it's a good thing for us to tell parents that we are going to go through this, because it really is extensive preparation and training. And we want people to realize that our police department and fire departments are really partners with us. We're helping them in their training, but it's also giving us experience. You recall in the month of May that we went through a simulation, it was like a table talk. And now is the, the real thing on June twenty-sixth. So because we won't meet again until after the fact, I just wanted you to know that that will be forthcoming.
Thank you. And Ms. Gualyumi.
Um, tonight, when we were talking about the restraint and seclusion policy, you know, one thing came up is that there is an annual, it needs to be reviewed annually, right? Which makes me think of, you know, what are requirements in our other policy and, and getting visibility to that. Then it came up similarly a second time regarding the plan, that that has to be reviewed, you know, every so often and submitted every so often. And so what I was thinking is that I would really, really like, you know, some kind of a matrix of our policies in particular, possibly any plans, as far as any requirements that we might have for when they have to be reviewed or when they were last reviewed. Because there could be a policy that hasn't been reviewed for six years, and you know what? As a board, I think a tool like a matrix like that would give us some visibility top-down into what's coming up and allow us to be a little more proactive than reactive as times change.
Okay. Vice Chair Barnes.
I just responded to that, because I think you had comments as well, but I wanted to, I thought I saw your hand up. I wanted to play off of yours. I actually was, kind of played a little bit with our database. I pulled down on our website all the policies, and I clicked on all the policies to see the last review dates. So I was actually doing that over the weekend. So I can share that with you, so we'll have it. And our date ranges go from current, obviously this one, and some of them haven't been updated since two thousand and three. A lot of them fall into two thousand and six, seven, eight, and there's also a batch from eleven, a couple from thirteen, one or two from fourteen, and then this one. So we do have, in the gambit of what we have posted on our website, some that just haven't been reviewed. And, you know, as a, as a board. haven't been reviewed. And, you know, as, as a board, and, you know, I think we all know that our first and foremost, we, we set policy. So, does it make sense to maybe look at them? And I looked, you know, I was to click, to see them, I clicked on them. And some of them are only three sentences. So, to review them, to make sure they're updated, and, and at least, you know, seem, and, and accepted by this, someone in, you know, this decade, might not be a bad thing, and it might be a very quick process. So, what I'll do is, when I get home, I'll send you what I played with over the weekend. But I wasn't ready for prime time, but you, you threw it. You threw it at me. So, I was, I was actually looking to maybe make that an agenda item for the summer. So, we can go through that. And the other thing I did was, I got the username and password. The New Hampshire School Boards Association keeps a policy database. So, when you talk about, they have sample policies using current law to, to follow. So, to see if we're in compliance, so we can do a comparative. And then, they actually had three different areas. They had required, recommended, and optional. So, we can look at all the policies they have in place and see where maybe we may have some gaps in policy altogether. So, as I said, I wasn't ready for prime time, but you brought it up, so I'm kind of already, you know, thinking about that as well. And maybe we can, you know, get the ball rolling. But I will send you everything I have tomorrow.
Ms. Gualyumi?
Quickly and concisely, thank you, Shannon. That's great. That sounds awesome to me.
Excellent. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to fourteen, new business. Mr. Schneider?
So, originally, I was going to pose this strictly for the next two meetings, but I don't know if it's appropriate to discuss or not. But one of the things that we've done over the last several meetings is we've started at seven o'clock, mostly to give the, the kids that are here a leg up and be able to get back at a reasonable time. I personally have found that starting earlier does two things. One, it gets us started earlier so that we get out earlier. But also, such as tonight, when we have a non-public agenda, the non-public agenda starts earlier. I know that during the years, many times, we'll have a non-public an hour before the meeting starts. Many times, that non-public ends at the very last minute. Sometimes, we shorten our conversation quickly. I mean, sometimes it's happened, where we've had it shut down in order to come here in time to be able to make the meeting. So, what I wanted to broach with the board is, maybe starting at least for the next two meetings, to start those meetings at seven, even though we don't have kids, and possibly consider doing it longer term, and, and having more formal non-publics afterwards, to get them more at a reasonable time.
Okay. So, I, I think, since our next meeting will be one of those summer meetings, rather than making this new business that we take up at a later date, I guess the question would, I'd just pose the question to the board, do folks mind meeting at seven as opposed to seven thirty? Six might be tougher for some of us with commutes. All right, and, and we're talking about that for the summer. What do you think when we move to the fall? Keep, keep it at seven, as opposed to seven thirty?
Davis, you're not getting six.
What, what do you think?
My goal's to not, I mean, we have to realistically say, can we make it in time for that?
Right.
That's why I didn't want to go to like six thirty or something like that, because I know that would be much more challenging for people that have to commute. But seven o'clock is, it seems to be, I mean, I know for other things like, like Budget Committee and other boards, seven o'clock tends to be the norm time, so, just a question.
Yeah. And the other benefit that you didn't mention is, a, a lot of times, we have invited guests that aren't children, but, you know, could be here until nine o'clock on an evening, and, you know, just as a courtesy to them. It's, it's not bad. But what we have to weigh that with is our ability to leave our, our jobs and, and get here at, at a reasonable time. So, so we'll do seven indefinitely, and certainly, you know, if at any point, it looks like, you know, any of us is having trouble with that, we'll just revisit the issue and adjust. Ms. Gualyumi?
I'm wondering if maybe we could commit over the summer, and then revisit it when the, at our August meeting?
Okay, so, so let, yeah, let's do that. So, we'll commit to the next two meetings, July and August, and, and we'll revisit it at maybe the August meeting, or after the first September meeting. I know the traffic patterns, in particular, on Route Three change drastically when school goes back in session versus when it's out, right? So, okay, great. Thank you, Andy. Good point. That takes us to item number fifteen, committee reports. Mr. Powell?
The health cost, no, I'm going to get this right one day. Healthcare Cost Containment Committee met for the last meeting of the year on June third, and I just wanted to share a couple numbers that came up during that time. And these are things that I intend on bringing up when we come to the table for negotiations with the MTA, to try and get a better partnership as to how to leverage this. Health Trust has a short, a smart shopper program, which basically is a web-driven, a web-based product, that if you're going to have a procedure of some sort, you can go onto this website, plug in what the procedure is, and the tool will give you how much it costs at various Anthem-covered facilities around your given area. You can plug in how many miles you want to go. So, it'll give you a cost for, say, a mammogram at CMC, at the Elliott, and then also at some private facilities, Bedford, Health Patient, and such. And the numbers are very, the difference is very significant. Now, if one of our employees takes advantage of this and uses the recommendation, they can earn a cash reward, money in their pocket, of anywhere of twenty-five up to five hundred dollars, depending on what the, the procedure is. This directly goes, the, the savings by using the, the less expensive procedure, goes directly to reducing the claims costs for the school district. And ninety-two percent of our premiums are based on actual claims cost. So, what that means is that if we're able to reduce the money that have paid out in claims, in theory, our premiums will not rise as much as they, as they could have. And the, the one piece that I picked up, that I did not realize before, and I don't know if all of our employees do, is that all family members are eligible. So, a family of four, let's say there's some procedure that gives you twenty-five dollars, you could get an extra hundred dollars in your pocket right there. If our employees had used the tool, the district could have realized a savings of a hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars during quarter one. And if you extrapolate that out over four quarters, it's a potential savings of seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars of claims savings, which goes to premium savings, as I said. As it was in quarter one of two thousand and fifteen, we did realize a savings of twenty-three thousand, six hundred and three dollars. That's fairly significant. You know, that, that's a, that's a decent amount. So, again, these are things that the Healthcare Cost Containment Committee is committed to getting out there, educating the, the, the employees more. There's some really great ideas of, of posters. I think someone is using Post-its, putting Post-its, Post-it notes all over everywhere to remind people. There's a big push these final weeks. A suggestion was made to, to let the staff know, hey, if, if you want some extra money for the summer, go in and fill out your health survey, because there's an incentive and cash in your pocket for that. So, there's some great stuff happening with that. I was glad Debbie came tonight. Debbie and her partner, Bill, thank you, attend every single meeting. And it's always nice when they bring us a check. And they tend to bring us a check more often than not, it seems. So, I'm, I'm anxious to, to continue this discussion on the next year.
Thank you. More committee reports. Ms. Gualyumi?
So, Parks and Rec met last Wednesday on June tenth. A couple of things. The first run of the, in fact, we met at Wasserman, which was kind of, we got a tour to go with it. So, it was a little different. And I understand from Shannon, it's always the first, I think, historically, that happens once a year.
Oh, so the camp, maybe their night.
Oh, okay. The first one of the Bark For Your Park ended last week. And as of last week, we weren't really sure if we were going to, Merrimack was going to be in the finalists, but I went and checked, and we are. So, as a medium town, apparently, they look at the votes and the sizes of the population. So, Merrimack is still a candidate to receive this hundred thousand dollar dog park, but it requires people to go and vote. You get up to two votes a day. You can do it through Facebook or, and through their website. The other towns that are in the running are Barstow, California, Bryant, Arkansas, Jacksonville, Illinois, and Willman, Montana. So, you know, we have a shot at it again, and, and hopefully, that would be a great addition to bring to this town. And it's certainly a high-dollar amount that we're in the running for, so...
Can you remind people what the website is, that they're going to vote for it on?
Sure. It is, oh, that's a trick question. It's...
No, it's not. I've got, it's www.petsafe.net.
It's slash Bark For Your Park.
Yeah, just go to the website, it's on the main page. You can click on Bark For Your Park. And the voting is, second round of the voting, the final voting, is the seventeenth of June to the twenty-second of July, because I'm still on Petsafe's mailing list, so...
Yep. Right now, it's on a pause for two more days, until people can start voting again.
Pause, P-A-W-S?
That's right. That's exact, that's what the website says.
Oh, does it really?
Yes, it does. Fantastic. And then, the enrollment is open for Camp Natta Cook. And the, Camp Natta Cook is able to accommodate that first full week of summer break. So, starting with the twenty-second, the enrollment is open and available to take children.
Wonderful.
Oh, one last thing.
Yes.
There's a lot of, a lot of updates. The Summer Concert Series is also going to be beginning, starting this Wednesday, and that's typically every week. But the schedule is also posted on the town website, or on the Parks and Rec link to the town website.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any other committee reports? Vice Chair Barnes?
It's more of an overdue comment, slash, I'm married to a library trustee. So, I will say that the summer reading program with the Merrimack Public Library is in play again this summer. So, I know Emily Carter, last, last meeting, talked about how Liz, the children's room librarian, comes in and got some kids signed up. But there's some great programs. They have weekly prizes. They have an, just an update on their website, so you can see all the different activities they do throughout the summer. At the end of the program, there's always a, an event at Abbey Griffin Park. And the last couple of years, they tied it in with Parks and Rec to have one of their summer concert series shows be a children singer tied in with their end-of-year party. So, hopefully, they did that again this year. But the library, summer reading program is a great tie-in with our district, and hope a lot of kids sign up and participate.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any other committee reports? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number sixteen, public comments on agenda items. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address the board? Seeing none, we'll take a moment to sign the manifest, and I will entertain a motion to enter non-public session per RSA ninety-one hyphen A colon three, Roman numeral two, sections A, B, and C. It is made by Mr. Powell, seconded by Vice Chair Barnes. Ms. Gualyumi, how do you vote?
In favor.
Mr. Schneider?
In favor.
Mr. Powell?
In favor.
Vice Chair Barnes?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Thank you, everyone. Good night.